All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for August the 24th, 2016. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads for a brief prayer, please?
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the Town of Rising Sun. I ask that you pray over and protect our people as well as our elected body here. I pray for our military serving overseas as well as our police officers who are always under attack. I pray that for their safety, God, not only here but throughout Cecil County and throughout our nation. Be with us as we come and go tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Could I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brian Lashier.
Here.
Commissioner Alan Orthonreith.
Here.
Commissioner Dave Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph Shepherd.
Here.
Mayor Travis Marion.
Here.
Let the record reflect that the -- all of the elected body is here and in attendance.
All right. It looks like the first under public presentations will be an introduction from Town Administrator Ponaburger.
Okay. Basically, the purpose for our meeting here tonight is to take the next step in the process of trying to solve the town's water capacity issues that have plagued the town for many, many years. As most of the town residents that have been here for a while know that the Town of Rising Sun has been in a water and sewer moratorium dating all the way back to October of 2005, at which time at that October meeting there was a motion made to enter into a water moratorium. As a result of some interactions with MDE because the town also had a failing wastewater treatment system also, there was another moratorium put in place in the form of two resolutions that were introduced and enacted in February of 2006. So the town has had a long history of having problems with water and sewer in the Town of Rising Sun. Let me get my bearings here. There are a variety of newspaper articles that you can trace back many years with the Town of Rising Sun in which the town has incurred a great deal of issues involving its water system. And I'm going to bring them up here in a second. So you can see going back in 2009, there were articles about the case of vanishing water. In 2005, there's an article about water woes forced Rising Sun construction drought, which is related to the water and sewer moratoriums. There's another article here that, as most people know, the town has been in and out of water restrictions over the years because of lack of capacity and the fact that the system is greatly influenced by drought conditions, probably to a level that's more extreme than some of our other area communities, adjacent communities. And there have been times when the Town of Rising Sun has had to pump water or get assistance from the fire department to get water delivered to the Town of Rising Sun. So we're here today because we're trying to solve this issue. But this issue also has a big impact on every property owner in the Town of Rising Sun also. So the town's been in a sewer and water moratorium since 2005. And we talked about some of these things when we were in the budget process. So this is something that's familiar to people. In 2016, the assessed value of properties in the Town of Rising Sun was estimated to be $188,791,281. So the assessed value of a property is how a municipality taxes properties to generate revenue to be able to provide the services that you're used to providing. But more importantly, assessed values are directly related to market value of your home. And so when the tax assessor comes around to assess the tax value of your home, they're also going to look at market trends to see what similar houses or properties to yours have sold for. So what this illustration shows is that in 2010, the net assessed real estate property value for the Town of Rising Sun And there are roughly 901 taxable properties in the Town of Rising Sun. There were 901 back in 2010, 2005, and there's essentially 901 here in 2016. So in 2010, the net assessable value was $236 million, as I said. In 2011, the assessed value dropped. And on the third column here, you'll see how much revenue was generated in order to provide you with services. In 2010, the town collected about $959,323 of tax money. When you look at what's happened in 2006, you'll see that the town has lost $47,378,000 -- $47,378,739 of assessed value. That's a 16.14% decrease. Or it's also a $192,000 decrease in the available revenue that the town has to provide the services, again, that you're used to getting in the Town of Rising Sun. If you add on the cost of inflation over that same six-year period, your home now is worth 22% less now than what it was in 2010. So what that basically is telling you is when you go out to get a home equity loan or to borrow against your property, you right off the bat have lost 22% of equity based upon the fact that assessed values are directly tied to market values. So one of the reasons, one of the trend lines that is the root of this decline in property values is quite simply because the town's been in a sewer and water moratorium for over 10 years now. And if you're familiar with Elkton, Northeast, Cecilton, Charlestown, whatever, think of how many times when you frequented those areas, you've seen new construction over the last 11 years, 10 years. You've seen new properties come in. That's not happened in the Town of Rising Sun. And because of the lack of infrastructure, there's been no one willing to come in and invest any reasonable amount of money into the Town of Rising Sun. So what that basically means is this moratorium is choking the Town of Rising Sun, as I choked myself. It's choking the Town of Rising Sun, and it's having a significant impact on everyone here. So what has the town done over those years? You can look at meeting minutes going back to 2005 in which the town at that time, in the Water and Sewer Commissioners Report of Mr. Clint Bowers, he reported that Clint, Mayor Cox, Commissioner Marmy, and Jeff Williams met with representatives from Chester County Water Authority about the possibility of Rising Sun purchasing water from them. So that was one of the original contacts with Chester Water goes all the way back to 2005 for that. Over the years, the town in 2007, they paid roughly $40,000 to have a water capacity management study done because when the town was experiencing water issues, the options that are available to you are obviously to do nothing. And for all intents and purposes, you can say the town has sort of de facto not been able to do anything, and you see the impact it has on your property values. The other option would be to try to drill wells within the Town of Rising Sun. The third option would be to try to drill wells outside of the Town of Rising Sun. The fourth option would be to go to other reputable water companies and see if they can sell, buy the water system and upgrade it or provide water to us. And then the fifth option is to try to go to other municipalities and get them to pump water to us. And then the sixth option, which is where we're at now, is to get a water line in from Chester Water. So the town met with Aqua, Artesian, American Water to discuss third-party solving of this issue. They all said, "Anything we do for you, we're going to buy it from Chester Water. So why pay us to be your middleman? You should go to Chester Water if that's what you're going to do to solve your issue." The town went to the Town of Northeast, Perryville, Elkton, and Port Deposit and talked about getting a water line land from their facilities up to us. One community said right off the bat that we would have to pay $2 million upfront, and we're talking about maybe 2009 when that happened. One community said we would need $2 million upfront to improve our water treatment facility to be able to handle that kind of additional volume. All the other communities had the capacity and they had the volume. But when you -- if you subscribe to the notion that the cost of lineal cost per foot is the same whether it comes from Northeast, Port Deposit, Perryville, or Chester Water, by lineal footage, Chester Water was closer, and it is also relatively downhill, meaning there's no pump stations that are needed. The other issue of going to the other communities, you might remember reading about this a couple of years ago when the county and the Town of Northeast got tangled up in a lawsuit about what is being charged to out-of-town customers. And the result of that lawsuit, which is similar to what we have here, if you're not in the incorporated limits of the Town of Rising Sun, or in that case, the incorporated limits of Northeast, you had to pay double the amount for water. So imagine Northeast trying to work out some kind of deal to sell us water at the same cost they were selling it to in-town customers when they just had a lawsuit that said that they had to charge double the amount. So right off the bat, the Town of Rising Sun would have been incurring double the amount of what those other communities' water rates would be. As I said, the town paid roughly $40,000 back in 2007 for a water capacity management study. That study concluded that there wasn't enough recharge area in the Town of Rising Sun. And describe that real briefly. Just think of your cereal bowl that you eat cereal out of in the morning. It's a bowl, and water collects in that. And MDE and the environmental people will only allow you to put so many straws in that bowl of water and draw out of it. And the Town of Rising Sun has met the limit of how many straws they were going to allow us to put in that bowl, so to speak. And so part of that study was to talk about going outside of the Town of Rising Sun and securing additional land and rights and easements, whatever, to try to acquire additional water. And at that time, it was suggested to us that we may -- we would be better off going to a third-party entity to just have a water line ran to the Town of Rising Sun. So the town passed various resolutions over the years. You see resolution -- there's Resolution 2010-12 that essentially appointed a committee to start looking at the sewer and water issues. And when you appoint those committees, you start to incur costs associated with that. So the town was running up the bills and getting engineering studies and consultants and financial analysis and going to meet with people. The resolution was modified again in 2015 -- at the end of 2010, and I'll explain in a second why it was modified. And then in 2013, a resolution was adopted at that time, brought up by then Sewer and Water Commissioner George Walker, that after all this studying and everything that we were doing, that the town was going to move forward with trying to work out the final details of an agreement with Chester Water. So I talked about why some of these issues were brought up. And the reason being is, you may recall this, that in 2010, a developer over at the old Van Dyke property across from Route 1 filed a $90 million lawsuit against the Town of Rising Sun. And the basis of that lawsuit was because the -- in their view, the Town of Rising Sun had not done due diligence in providing sewer and/or water to the developer. Shortly thereafter, another developer filed a tort claim against the Town of Rising Sun, which is basically preserving your spot in line to take future legal action. And so the town was faced with six charges against it for a total of $90 million. That charge was later amended, and an additional 20-some-odd million was added to that charge. So at one time, we were facing a $121 million lawsuit. The problem with that is that only five or only some of the counts would have been covered by the town's insurance carrier at that time. It's sort of like if you, you know, get a flood in your home and you don't have flood insurance, the insurance company's not going to cover. Well, in this particular case, there were portions of that lawsuit that our insurance carrier was not going to cover. So finally, on July 1st of 2003, after all this work that -- or 2013, after all this work that I just talked about, spending the money, studies, evaluating, researching, the Town of Rising Sun was happy to announce that in federal court, the judge had ruled in our favor and dismissed the charges. But one of the reasons why they had dismissed the charges was that the courts determined that the town had been doing due diligence to provide this infrastructure to these developers. And it wasn't any fault of the Town of Rising Sun that our wells were -- that we couldn't expand capacity in our wells. It wasn't our fault for a variety of other things that were incurring with the town. And so we were able to defend that lawsuit. But the thing that's -- the thing that's interesting about that, and you see it in the press release that was made, however, as with all lawsuits, this may likely not be over yet. There are -- in this case, the appeals of hold expire, but it doesn't stop somebody from filing a new lawsuit. And this case was won because a real plan for sewer and water was designed, developed, and executed dating back to 2009. And the courts were satisfied that the town was committed and taking adequate steps to meet its obligations to the developer. Therefore, it is important for everyone to understand that to stop, stumble, or withdraw from the current plan would invite a new cause of action. In this case, it was frapple. But at any given time, somebody could file the same similar type of lawsuit against the Town of Rising Sun if we don't solve this issue of not having water once and for all. So, you know, the thing that's, you know, interesting here is although it's nice to celebrate, we must also learn from history and make sure that we do not straddle future generations of our community and businesses with the same financial distress and perils that we faced over the last three years. Meaning, if we would have lost that lawsuit without insurance coverage, we would have had to raise the tax rate on all of our properties. And that could have been roughly around $20,000 per property to be able to pay whatever damages the courts could have awarded in that thing. And so the comment here about let's not recreate history is twofold. Number one, we had somewhat accuse us of not doing due diligence. We were able to show that we did do due diligence. But there are people that have been here a long time that know that the town was entertaining ideas of how to solve the sewer plan dating back to the early 2000s. And the cost of that construction was roughly $2 million at that time for a million different reasons, turnover, politics, personalities, whatever. The town did not execute that until 2013, and it ended up costing the town $16 million. And so that's the lessons to be learned here, that the costs are only going up higher and higher here. To date, the town has spent about $700,000 studying this stuff dating back to 2007, 2008. So the town has made that financial commitment based upon just slow, methodical evaluation, and that's how we got to where we're at now. With that, getting back to the agenda, the first individual that we want to introduce here tonight, and we have all of our consultants here in the room that have been charged and commissioned with working on the town's behalf to find the best solution possible, to try to get us out of this quagmire that we just talked about here. So the first individual that I want to introduce is Mr. Michael Klein. Michael Klein works out of Cozen and O'Connor's office. I have a little bio here. Mr. Klein has been in the -- has over 30 years of experience with public water and sewer systems. His work includes representing municipal authorities and investor-owned water and sewer systems. Michael handles any array of public water supply and sanitary sewer matters, and is legal counsel to state chapters of several U.S. and international associations of public water supplies. He has served as general counsel for public water suppliers in Kentucky, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Virginia, and West Virginia. He has significant experience in the sale and regionalization of public water and sewer systems and in the negotiations of bulk water sales and purchase agreements. Here is more of his bio. So we -- look, whatever we were doing was going to impact the Town of Rising Sun for generation after generation. And we knew we had to make the best effort possible to get this as perfect and right as possible. We weren't going to get another shot to do this. So we went out and we hired what we believed are the best people or top people in their field to help us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Michael Klein.
Thank you, Calvin. There's a series of slides that we're going to go through. But as Calvin indicated, I was retained by the town to represent it in the negotiation of what has become known as the Bulk Water Supply and Connection Agreement with Chester Water Authority. And that's what I've been doing. Chester Water Authority, by the way, is a large Pennsylvania water authority that has two sources of water supply. One is the Susquehanna River, and the other is the Okteroro Reservoir. They have a very large, state-of-the-art water filtration plant. They have water allocations for 60 million gallons of water a day. And the agreement provides for what happens on the Pennsylvania side of the state line, which is a water line, and it's going to be a large water line. It's seven miles long, and it's 16-inch pipe, and it's 12-inch pipe. And it runs, as I said, it's seven miles long, and it runs to the Pennsylvania-Maryland State Line. The agreement provides for the details of the construction of the line, the connection fee that the town will be paying, rebates and reimbursements that the town will be receiving from Chester Water Authority, and also the quantity and the quality of the water that would be provided. So if we can go to the next two slides. The water agreement is a 30-year water agreement. That's the initial term. And it automatically renews for successive, in perpetuity, five-year terms unless either one of the parties elect to terminate the agreement. But in order to do so, a party would have to give 36 months, three years, advance notice. So it's a long-term contract that would, you know, solve the town's water supply needs for three decades or greater. Now, with respect to the quantity that's provided in the agreement, we start with 170,000 gallons a day, minimum, take or pay. And the way the agreement is negotiated is the town during the first five years would have a right on any day to take two times that, up to 340,000 gallons a day. And the quantity gets adjusted every five years based upon what happened during the previous five-year period. So if the average goes up to 180,000 or 190,000 or 200,000, that's what the minimum will be for the next five years. And then the maximum will be 400,000 gallons, two times whatever that amount is. And what's projected is that over the 30-year term, there will be a peak day of 1.8 million gallons a day. So there's no limit really on the amount of water that the town will be able to take during the term. It'll be based upon what its needs are, the history of the withdrawals, and then it gets adjusted upward every five years. The quality of the water. In the United States, we have what's known as the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act. And that is an act that was enacted in 1974, and it applies to all of the states. And what -- under the act, what happens is the Environmental Protection Agency sets maximum contaminant level, treatment techniques, and other rules and regulations with respect to water quality. And every state has to meet those standards or exceed them. So under that act, which is called a primacy act, each state, if it enacts its own Safe Drinking Water Act that is at least as stringent, it'll receive funding for a portion of its state program from the federal government. So the states have adopted. Maryland has a Safe Drinking Water Act. Pennsylvania has a Safe Drinking Water Act. And the other states do as well. And they, again, all have to meet the minimum federal standards. So the water will have to -- because it's coming from Pennsylvania, it will have to meet the federal standards, the Pennsylvania standards. And in order for the town to be obligated to purchase the water, it also has to meet the standards under the Maryland Safe Drinking Water Act. And the water that will be coming from Chester, as I indicated, is filtered water. That is, that runs through a filtration plant that has a laboratory and is, you know, continually, you know, being tested. Now, the water rates that will be charged, under the agreement, the rates that will be charged to Rising Sun will be the same rates that Chester charges under its tariff to a class, it's called the utility class of customers. So Chester sells water to other utilities, investor-owned utilities, municipal systems. And there is a rate class. And under the law, the rates have to be reasonable and uniform. And Chester's rates are, comparatively speaking, very reasonable rates. If the rates kicked in today, it would be $3.11 per thousand gallons, which in the water business is considered to be a very low rate. And also, the agreement provides that when before Chester is able to raise its rates, it has to give six months' notice to the town. And the reason for that is it would then provide the town with enough advanced lead time to make the necessary rate adjustments to accommodate whatever the increase is going to be from, you know, from Chester. The agreement also, as I indicated, provides for this construction of the seven-mile pipeline. And Chester is responsible for the pipeline. Chester has to maintain it in perpetuity. The town will have no expenses going forward with respect to that pipeline after it's actually constructed. And the way the agreement is drafted, the town will pay what's known as a connection charge. And the connection charge And the connection charge is related to the actual cost of the construction. And you'll see on the slide, after the word gross, the actual cost of the construction is estimated to be $5,800,000 and some change. The way the agreement is structured, we were able to negotiate rebates and reimbursements to the tune of 1.8 million. So after the construction is finished, and the valve is turned on, and water starts coming to Rising Sun, within 30 days of that, Chester will refund and rebate to the town $1,008,000. So the actual cost of the connection fee is $4 million. So seven miles of pipeline, 30-year supply of water, pretty much an unlimited amount based upon the various five-year consumptions rates of the town. The next slide indicates the two payments that I discussed that add up to $1,008,000. Just to break them into two categories. One is a rebate, the $1,277,574. That's a rebate for potential customers that will connect to that line in Pennsylvania. And also, a rebate for the initial water service, five years of water service that'll be provided to the town by Chester. The second line, the $525,000. As I indicated at the very beginning, we're dealing with a 16-inch diameter main that then reduces to 12-inch, and then comes to the state line. The 16-inch portion we negotiated doesn't, isn't actually necessary for Rising Sun's purposes. So we addressed that with Chester and said it would be unreasonable for Rising Sun to be required to pay for that. That was more for the customers who would connect to the line in Pennsylvania. So 25% of the estimated cost of that line is $525,000. So that will be reimbursed to the town. So the town will get back $1,802,574. The, during the negotiations, as we were looking at the service area of Rising Sun today, and what it would be projected to be over a period of time, the negotiating team concluded that it would be appropriate to take measures to limit the ability of Chester to ever compete with Rising Sun in Maryland. And we were successful in doing that. There is three provisions in the agreement. Provision number one, which is the most important, is Chester can never use any portion of that seven-mile pipeline. It can never use that to connect, to come into Maryland and compete with Rising Sun in Cecil County. Number two, if Chester ever decided to build another line to come into Maryland, into Cecil County, for the first 10 years, it could not come within 12 miles of this building, of Town Hall. And then after the first 10 years, in perpetuity, it could never serve within five miles. And it's very unlikely that that would ever happen because it would be extremely expensive for them to build a duplicate line coming in. And plus the fact, the town would be selling that water, which we will be purchasing from Chester anyway, so they would be getting the, you know, the revenues from it. But the town is protected in terms of competition from Chester. And that's one of the last things that we were able to negotiate in the agreement that actually sealed it as far as Rising Sun is concerned. And I would add that today, coincidentally, I was notified that Chester Water Authority has taken all appropriate action to approve the agreement, and it's been executed. So Chester has signed the agreement, you know, binding themselves, you know, to the agreement. And the town will be taking action this evening, as you know. So there will be other speakers, and there'll be an opportunity during the public questioning period to, you know, to ask questions or address anything that I've just stated. So Calvin, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, the next speaker that we have is Mr. Ryan Flickinger from KCI Engineers. For those of you that have been around the town for a while know that KCI Engineers has been the town engineer dating back to the early 2000s. Predominantly, their work has been centered around helping the town review development plans that are submitted by developers. They have also helped the town with the reconstruction, design, and bidding of street repairs, stormwater, drainpipe repairs. And as the town engineer, we have asked them to look at the plan from a technical standpoint up to this point and be able to speak and answer some of the questions regarding this project. Who, we have Mr. Ryan Flickinger here from KCI. Mr. Flickinger, Ryan has more than 16 years of experience through the Maryland, throughout Maryland and Delaware. His responsibilities have included detailed design of water distribution systems, hydraulic modeling, sanitary collection systems, sewage pumping stations, water and wastewater treatment plant upgrades, and civil land development. His experience also includes creating specifications and bid documents, creating construction cost estimates, hydraulic modeling, writing proposals, and managing project budgets for the past few years. Mr. Flickinger has taken the lead on securing funding opportunities for several municipal clients throughout a variety of state and federal programs, including DNREC and OSW, state revolving funds and planning grants. The other thing is when you look at KCI's experience and Mr. Flickinger's experience, they are also the engineers for the town of Elkton. And you can see that Mr. Flickinger has experience in the Elkton-Artesian interconnection, where Artesian provides some water for the town of Elkton. So Mr. Flickinger has a good background in these types of projects that we're embarking on right here now. So with that, I'll turn that over to Ryan.
Thanks, Calvin. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time tonight. Calvin and Mike have already covered a lot of the overall project information. And my slides have a lot of detail in them. And so I'm going to focus on the engineering nuts and bolts and the construction nuts and bolts. But while I'm talking, I'll ask you to, you know, please take a look at all the bulleted items that I have up there, just in case it, you know, it spawns a thought or perhaps a question that you'll have for later on. Calvin, you can go to the next slide. This is just an introduction to this PowerPoint, but you've already done a good job of explaining that. Real quick, to touch on Calvin's introduction, we have been Rising Sun's engineers since 2004. The type of work that we've done for the town has been widespread from an engineering, planning, and survey standpoint. A couple of the projects that are, project types that are most pertinent to this, to the topic tonight is water wastewater designs, studies, and analysis. I remember one of the first projects I, that I had when I first came to KCI 11 years ago, was some hydraulic modeling with the town of Rising Sun. So we're familiar with your system as well as engineering services for capital improvement projects. And Calvin had touched on it on my resume. Hydraulic modeling is definitely been my wheelhouse for over a decade now on both the wastewater and the water side of things. To date, as far as the water system and how to achieve more flow and higher-quality flow, our role, KCI's role, has been in reviewing the preliminary engineering report and the environmental report that GHD, another engineering consulting firm, has provided to the town. And very recently, we've been involved in assisting the town and Mike with the SRBC application. And so what I would like to do now is give a cursory review and summary of the engineering that's been done so far, both from GHD and another firm, as well as our recent input. The current water system, as it stands in the town right now, you have five active wells all within the town limits. There are water supply concerns and water supply issues that's been brought to Rising Sun's attention from the state, and you were aware of it anyway. Basically, during drought conditions, the town struggles to meet daily peak demands. I really liked Calvin's analogy of the straws in your cereal bowl. That's very accurately describes the aquifers that you're tying into in that one well does affect another well nearby. And sometimes it can affect wells that seemingly far away, depending on the hydrogeologic soil conditions. The, these water supply issues have caused the town institute the moratorium, as Calvin has already mentioned in detail. And in essence, it has stunted the growth of the town. The moratorium was necessary, for sure. The nature of a moratorium is that it is temporary. And as you can see, there's been some legal issues with a prolonged moratorium, namely with developers looking to come to town. So in terms of planning from an engineering perspective, you know, the first thing you look at is nearby options. Calvin had mentioned my experience with the Elkton-Artesian interconnect. It was a situation where there wasn't a cost-effective and viable way for them to get their own water at the time. And MDE wanted to see additional flows. And so the Artesian interconnect provide them with the water that they needed. In this area, there are not any known viable county-wide plans or nearby sources of water to tie into. And think about it, it kind of makes sense. They're looking to draw from the same aquifers that you're currently drawing from, and the aquifer conditions are not ideal. Next slide, please. This is a visual. I wasn't sure how easy this was going to be to read. But just real quick, for what it's worth, this shows your town's existing water system infrastructure, the pipes, the water towers, and the location of the wells. The location of the water tower is that red dot towards middle-southern part of town. That'll become important later on. But this is essentially just showing how your wells, the wells are the ones with the white leader box pointing to them. It shows how the wells are currently dispersed. And I'll touch on a couple of the key features of the water system on a future slide, so you can go to the next one. So this is my summary of the preliminary engineering report that was put together a while back. The format of a preliminary engineering report, which is not only submitted to you, the town, but it's also submitted to USDA for the potential funding. It's somewhat rigid in that the do-nothing option is something that you have to discuss. You have to talk on it. And it's used as a benchmark to compare the other options, even if it's not a viable option. And the do-nothing option always sounds kind of trite to me, but USDA has the engineer word it that way, even though the potential to do nothing isn't really an option, which is this case. We've already touched on the details of what would happen if nothing is done. The, jumping over to the connection to nearby municipalities. As Calvin has mentioned, the town has thoroughly explored this option. And his example of northeast doubling the rates is typical, that the idea of purchasing water from a nearby town, it's more typical than not, the rates would be peaked. The option to drill new wells, which is certainly an option that you should look at, and you did. I know it's been talked about for a long time. And again, the aquifers that the town has as an option to drill into, you're not getting ideal hydraulic conditions there. The best way I can explain it, I like to think visually, to Calvin's analogy, depending on the type of aquifer and the soils and the recharge, when you have five straws dipping into that to that same bowl of milk, some of the straws, you can imagine, are going to compete with each other. It's called a cone of influence in hydrogeology, where the water level is going to dip the more forcefully you're taking water out of one of the straws. And it could dip to an elevation low enough to where it's impacting a nearby straw to be able to pull as much water as it can take out. So it's not a simple matter of, well, we have five wells now. We want to have, we want to double our water availability. You drill five more wells. It doesn't work that. That's, that would be ideal conditions, but that's not what you see in practice. And then also, we understand that there's, you know, water quality issues as well with drilling locally with these aquifers. The last option is, on this screen, is the Chester Water Authority option. The water quality, Mike did a good job of summarizing. There, it is high-quality water, and it would provide the quantity of water required for the town's existing users and also plans for growth. Redundancy is very important, that second-to-last bulleted item. Many towns struggle with the state's guidelines for redundancy in that you have to assume your largest water user, your largest water source, I'm sorry, is out of commission. So you take your largest well or your largest surface water, and you tell the state, you know, show me how you can meet your water demands if that treatment plant is down. Well, in this case, CWA sourced water, they have redundancy. So it is a reliable source of water. And in reviewing the PER, the PER's recommendation, PER is Preliminary Engineering Report, their recommendation is to pursue the Chester Water Authority due to the issues outlined in the previous options. And KCI agrees with that recommendation. Next slide, please. So to get in a little bit of the details, and I won't take too much of your time, but there's two main alignment options for the Chester interconnect in terms of how it ties, how it would tie into the town. The proposed alignment on the Maryland side for both options upstream are the same in that when it crosses the state line, it will go south along Red Pump Road, crossing over Route 1, south along Mount Street, southeast along North Walnut Street. And that's where it enters the town, and it will tie in right next to the church on 42 North Walnut Street. This option would tie the interconnect line into an existing town line, where at that point, it would have many paths, there would be many flow paths stemming from that point. Some would go to, the water would go to serve immediate users. A majority of the water would go to fill the water tank. If there were, you know, if there was a fire and the hydrant was being tapped, the flow would go directly to that hydrant. So what that means is So what that means is the advantage to that is it's the shortest run of pipe. It's essentially the closest viable place where this interconnect coming from the north could tie into your town. So what you're doing there is you're minimizing construction and disturbance within the town. I'm sure you all know this, but whether, you could have the best contractor in the world, but if you're doing construction and you're tearing up streets, it's a headache. And there's logistical issues that go along with that. In order to determine whether this option is feasible from a water quality and a hydraulic standpoint, when I say hydraulic, what I really mean is you have enough pressure and enough flow to meet your demands. Your sprinklers, your highest fixtures on your second floor, your showerheads have enough pressure, you have enough pressure to fight fires. That's what I, in essence, that's what I mean when I say hydraulic. We would, the town, sorry, the town would need to make sure that the design engineer does a hydraulic analysis to make sure that that tie-in point is suitable. And then if it is suitable, from a quality and quantity standpoint, it's advantageous to the second option. Calvin, next slide, please. The second option, which is detailed here, again, it's the same on the upstream side. It's the same from getting PA, getting from PA to the town. However, it stays on Mount Street, heads southeast along West Pearl Street, instead of going down Walnut. Heads south along Queen Street, east along Cherry Street, to the intersection of North Walnut, where it will tie into your water tower. Taking the interconnect and having an independent pipeline go straight from the source, meaning Chester, to your water tower, there are pluses and minuses to that. The plus is that the water quality and the hydraulics are simplified, and you're basically making sure that the water quality issue is very easy to capture, very easy to hydraulic model. In essence, there's one place for that water to go, it's going to your water tower. It's not going to go anywhere else. So the hydraulics are also improved, in that there isn't any guesswork on how much of the flow is going to go right to your water tower. All of it would go right to your water tower. The downside is you're going to have higher construction costs, because you're putting in more linear feet of pipe, and you're going to have disturbance throughout that alignment that in the proposed route for the water line to get to that water tower. So next slide, please. This picture says a thousand words, but again, I wasn't sure how visual this was going to be. This, that redish line throughout the middle, lower part of it, that is the state line. And as you get into town, you can, you might be able to make out like a darker blue line legging off and going to the right, that's the tie-in to near the church. And then the lighter blue line is the second option I just described, where it heads down through town and goes to the water tower. So those are the, pictorially, those are the two options just discussed. Next slide, please. So moving forward, the do-nothing option, again, it's required as a reporting tool, that that was covered in the preliminary engineering report. It's considered unacceptable from a public health, legal liability, as Calvin touched on, and sustainability standpoint. The option for drilling new wells and/or tying into nearby municipalities, that has been vetted thoroughly. Calvin gave you the history there, and it is not deemed to be a viable option. Just another second point, the drilling wells is not only going to, it's not only going to be an issue as far as making sure the wells aren't competing with each other, but water quality and aquifers change over the years. I think it's something a lot of folks don't realize. The, I've worked with a lot of towns where they get us involved, because their raw water five years ago had contamination level of .3 milligrams per liter for a certain constituent that was relatively cost-effective to handle through filters, or maybe it didn't even breach the maximum concentration where you need to treat it. Two years later, the raw water concentration of that same contaminant is 10 times what the plant was designed for. And so drilling wells has a level of uncertainty, I guess is the best way to put it. There's an inherent risk associated with how much it's going to cost the town to maintain those wells over a 20, 30, 40-year period. So that leads us to the CWA interconnect. If that is the path moving forward, it will provide the necessary quality and quantity of water needed for the town's existing and future demand. So there's much less of a risk factor, there's much less uncertainty. The primary engineering slash design factors to consider, if that option is selected and progresses, it would be primarily the hydraulic modeling, to ensure that that northern tie-in point, ensure whether or not that is a viable option moving forward. The alternative, if the modeling suggests that there may be water quality issues or hydraulic issues, would be to run the dedicated line all the way to the water tower. And also, the other challenge here, and as Calvin mentioned this, I have experience with this, with the Elkton-Artesian interconnect, because on that job, I was getting water, town was getting water from Artesian in the state of Delaware, crossing the Delaware-Maryland state line, tying into the town of Elkton, right by there, by the reservoir. Has an extra layer of permitting associated with it, because now you have two state entities involved and two water entities involved, instead of usually. Usually what the states and water companies are used to is one water company, one regulatory state department that they're dealing with. So this has just an extra level of complexity from a permitting process. And that's the entirety of my presentation. Again, thank you very much for your time. I have my information, contact information up there, and as Calvin and Mike mentioned, questions will be saved until all the presenters are done. So thank you very much.
All right. The next presenter that we have tonight is Joe Mason from Davenport and Company. Davenport and Company has been working with the town of Rising Sun going back to roughly 2008. If you folks remember, the town had been on again, off again, on how they were going to solve the wastewater treatment plant, they were going to build a normal oxidation ditch, a biolox system, they were going to fix a lagoon, back and forth. The town had presented a study or recommendation to MDE. MDE denied that study, and then told us we had to go back and fix the lagoon, only to about a year or two later, come back and say, no, you don't have to fix the lagoon, you can't fix the lagoon, build a new wastewater treatment plant. And so with the, when you're talking about millions of dollars of cost for these types of projects, you better make sure that you have a good financial consultant onboard to make sure that you have the financial resources in order to be able to pay for this stuff. So Joe Mason with Davenport and Company has been with the town of Rising Sun since roughly 2009, 2008, 2009. This drawing's a little bit sideways, but Davenport is a nationally recognized company that has offices and services pretty much the southeastern portion of the United States. Davenport and Associates Company goes all the way back to 1863, so it's been around for a long time. The Davenport, as I said, they're pretty nationally recognized, they've done work for the city of Annapolis in Maryland, a lot of work, as you can see, the dollar value of those projects there. They've done a lot of work for Carroll County, they've done work for Cecil County itself, they've had a working relationship with Cecil County since 1986. You can see the different types of things that they have done in providing financial consulting assistance to Cecil County. They've done a lot of work in Charles County. Again, you look at the dollar amounts, these are millions of dollars, the people are bringing, needing financial consultants to come in and help to manage that, and that's what Davenport's specialty is. The city of Cumberland, Maryland, you can see some projects there, Frederick County, Maryland, so they've had a lot of work in Maryland. Joe Mason is the principal advisor. We have been working with Joe Mason, as I said from the beginning. Joe has 19 years of experience as a state-level debt manager and a senior credit executive for Fitch Ratings, and a financial advisor to state and local governments throughout the mid-Atlantic region. You can see he's got a lot of experience in Maryland. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mason, who's going to give us sort of the financial snapshot of all of this.
Thank you, Calvin. Good evening, everyone. Wait for the presentation to come up here. So we've been tasked with, as Calvin alluded to, Mr. Bodenberger alluded to, with helping the town to develop an overall financial plan. And this is sort of our second iteration, if you will, of this effort. The first involved the wastewater treatment plant. And as you'll see in a moment, the financial plan that we put in place, and that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners for the wastewater treatment plant, has been very successful in terms of meeting its intended purpose, which was to gradually raise the level of utility rates to a point where the debt service for the wastewater treatment plant was affordable, and there was a little bit of surplus every year to build the town's reserves, to number one, build some financial capacity for this particular project, which we knew was a need back in 2009, 2010, even with the wastewater treatment plant done. But also to make sure that the town maintained a reasonable level of reserves. The town's existing utility system, it should not be forgotten, does require maintenance, as do all utility systems. KCI and Ryan will tell you that. He, I'm sure a fair amount of his work involves, you know, system upkeep and maintenance and so forth. It's not all about growth. So having a prudent level of reserves is something we, as a financial advisor, recommend. So when we started looking at the Chester Water Authority project, we first wanted to not only look back, but also look forward at what the future costs could be. This overall is a roughly $10 million project. You had heard about previously, in Mr. Klein's discussion of the connection charge, there's also, as Ryan mentioned, there's also costs associated with the town constructing, designing, constructing, developing, what have you, the Maryland side of the line. You add it all together, and all the attendant costs associated therewith to bringing us to where we are today, the project is estimated at this point in time to cost $10 million. That is not, however, the amount of the permanent financing that the town will undertake. The town is, was also alluded to, the town is getting $1.8 million back from Chester Water within 30 days of the line being, the spigot being turned to open, if you will. And that breaks down into the $1.27 million piece, as you see at the bottom here of page one. That is the incentive for potential customers, it's the reimbursement that Chester Water is giving to the town of Rising Sun. And then there's the $525,000, which relates to Chester Water effectively reimbursing the town for the extra-large pipe that they're putting in on their side to serve their customers. We have applied to the USDA Rural Utility Service, sometimes known as Rural Development, for financing for this project. As we'll get into, USDA has certain requirements in how the funding for the project proceeds, and what we can and cannot do with some of those rebate dollars from USDA. For example, the $525,000 is deemed by USDA and by the town's bond council to be a capital cost reimbursement, and therefore must be used to reduce the amount of the permanent financing. In addition to the rebates that the town is getting from Chester Water, the US government is giving a grant to the town of Rising Sun of $1 million, which will again reduce the overall size of the borrowing. And as you'll see in the numbers built in later, the town is getting the lowest possible rate that USDA Rural Development has to offer, which, as we sit here today, is 1.625% for 40 years. That's, I can tell you, being in the financial services industry, that is an extraordinarily low rate for an extraordinarily long period of time. If you would, turn the page, Calvin, just a snapshot here. As I mentioned, a lot of numbers on this page, I'm sure it's hard for you to read, it's not really the intention. I think if you would focus your eyes on really lines 17 and 21, which are the two shaded yellow lines, you'll see that the rate increases that were put into effect for the wastewater treatment plant have had, as I said, the designed effect, which is to slowly grow the net operating income of the utility enterprise funds of the town, such that it is generating enough net revenue after paying the expenses of running the systems to service the debt, which is the combination of lines 18 and 19, total debt service, and then line 21 is net income after debt service. So that's the amount that, after paying all the expenses to operate the town's systems and paying the debt associated with the wastewater treatment plant, that is the amount of money that the town is able to set aside in reserves, which has been used to grow the reserves and to cash fund some of the project expenses related to Chester Water. Okay. So then the question becomes, as you'll see going forward, given what we've done previously, now we're at a point where we have to look at, okay, now what do the rates need to be to continue that record of success and financial prudence in order to be able to afford this new $10 million project with Chester Water? Okay. So, again, the total cost, you'll see there in the middle of the page, is $10 million, $10,000. That is made up of the design, construction, construction management, and all the attendant costs associated with putting the pipes in the ground, as estimated by the engineering firm, GHD, that's contained in what we've been calling the PER, Preliminary Engineering Report, and those costs total $8.9 million. In addition, the town has had other associated costs related to implementation, financial planning, legal, and issuance costs for various aspects of the financing, the total about $1.1 million. The long-term borrowing amount, however, as I mentioned earlier, is not $10 million, it's about $8.5 million. So from the $10 million, we net off the $525,000, which is a portion of that rebate from Chester Water, and the million-dollar grant. We will effectively be borrowing the full project cost amount on an interim basis, which is what the rules of US Rural Development require. They don't provide their funding or grant dollars until the project is complete to their satisfaction. This is the federal government minding tax dollars, what have you. The town has to put up the funds, and once the project is complete and it's proven to be in good working order, then they will close on the permanent financing. So these two numbers at the bottom of the page, the $5.25 and the $1 million, will be effectively used to reduce the amount of the interim funding and pay back a portion of that loan, so that the permanent amount of funding that the town needs to take out for 40 years is $8.5 million. In any financial modeling, assumptions are important. We have, in order to be conservative, and as our duty to you, we have a responsibility We have, in order to be conservative, and as our duty to you, we have a responsibility as a financial advisor, in a regulated environment, to do what is appropriate and right for the town of Rising Sun. So it would be inappropriate for us to make assumptions related to, for example, growth that you can't bank on. Projected growth from development is not money in the bank. So our analysis has assumed rates and charges that are necessary to fund the Chester Water project in the same manner that we funded the wastewater treatment plant, in a responsible manner, without reliance on growth or additional grant dollars, what have you. If those things happen, and we can reduce the amount of rates that we're projecting, that's a wonderful thing, and we'd be happy to run new projections that reflect that reality, when and if it becomes a reality. But it's our job to present what I'll call a worst-case scenario. We've also assumed, again, the cost of things goes up. We all know what inflation is. So we've assumed a 3% annual growth in the operating expenditures. We've got some further assumptions in here. I won't detail them completely, but suffice to say, we've incorporated the tenants of the agreement with Chester Water in terms of the take-or-pay obligation. We've gotten information from the town staff about their current and projected budgets, and we've relied on the town's audit and financial statement to reflect its cash position. On page five, these are really more technical assumptions about when the debt is assumed to come online. I don't necessarily think it's germane to this discussion, but we've laid them out there for you. We have also, at the bottom of the page, included, first of all, no additional utility debt for the town of Rising Sun. Now, that may or may not prove to be a reality, but for purposes of this analysis, we've assumed no additional debt going forward. We have, however, assumed $75,000 a year, growing at 3% annually, for what we'll call pay-as-you-go projects. There have been periodic water main breaks here in town, and the town needs to have the resources to come in and do those repairs without resorting to external borrowing. Okay? So, on page six, this is a pro forma, a future look at what the rate increase is required to fund the Chester Water project. This is a typical monthly customer bill, and customer bills are assumed to be, for a typical customer, of 5,500 gallons per month. And you'll see, if you look at the total bill, monthly bill, at the bottom of the page, over the next five years through fiscal 2021, rates and charges will go up by approximately, well, they will go up by exactly 48%. These rates and charges are encompassed in a rate ordinance that will be introduced later this evening. No final action will be taken tonight. And effectively, over the next 10 years, water and sewer bills will essentially, on a monthly basis, double over 10 years. So round numbers, 50%, five years, double over 10 years. Okay? Now, if you'll turn with me to what that translates to on an annual basis, and those may seem like significant increases, and I'm not disputing the fact that they may, that you may consider them to be so, but bear with me for just one moment. If you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see that the town's current water and sewer bills total, for the average customer, about $1,500 a year. Again, you see the same rate increases at the very last line that you saw on the previous page. If you look at the increase from 2018 to 2019, when the rate increases first go into effect, the annual cost of a water and sewer bill in Rising Sun to pay for the Chester Water project will go up by about $218. If you divide that by 365 days a year, do the math, and again, I'm not trying to be cavalier about this, money is money, but it comes out to 60 cents a day. When I arrived in Rising Sun this afternoon, I went to the Sunoco Station on the far side of town, and I bought a bottle of water, and it cost me 99 cents plus tax. So 60 cents a day for pure, filtered, treated, available, uninterruptible water supply is not an extreme price to pay, in our view. Page eight is the detailed pro forma. I dare say you probably don't want to get into the weeds on this. I don't, but I do want to point, Calvin, if you could scroll one forward, please. You probably can't read that. But again, I want to point you to, in the, sort of the top third of the page, you'll see the town has made a strategic decision, in this instance, to take that $1.27 million, the element of the Chester Water rebate that it's receiving when the water line is complete. And instead of using that to reduce the loan amount, it is taking that cash, and there's a resolution to this effect on the agenda later this evening, is using that $1.27 million in cash to smooth out the impact of the rates to the town's citizenry over the next four years. So they will divide that $1.27 million, no interest earnings are assumed on that, and they will use it effectively to reduce the amount of rate increases to the customer. And that turns out to be, to the town's economic advantage, relative, I mean, in terms of impact on rates, relative to using the money to reduce the par amount or the debt amount. It's a better overall result to the end customer. Okay? Page nine. Again, these are some footnotes. They're here to illuminate, to the extent that the town makes this document available. I would encourage you to read the details. The footnotes of financial pro formas are important to understand, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to read through them. So on the next page, I said at the outset, it's our responsibility to tell the town what it has to do with its utility rates in order to be able to responsibly afford this project. Therefore, we purposefully did not include growth. But just as a frame of reference, so that the folks here in the audience, and those that might be watching this at a later time, can understand, growth with the moratorium lifted, it's reasonable to assume that some growth will occur over time. Part of it depends on the town's wishes overall. Part of it depends on who's on the elected board and how vigorously they pursue such opportunities. We haven't factored any of that in, again, but to give you just an idea of what a little bit of growth would mean, at the bottom of the page here, the town charges capital improvement fees, sometimes known as an impact fee, for new connections to hook up to the system. It charges $8,000 for water and $8,000 for sewer. If you were to get 20 such connections over some period of time, that would translate into $328,000 in upfront monies that would be paid to the town to help with future capital projects or to help defray debt service, and it would translate into about $46,000 a year of recurring rate revenue. So the more equivalent residential units you bring into the community, whether they be residential or commercial, the wider you spread the rate base, and the more people that are paying, the lower your bills have to be. So a little bit of growth goes a fair good distance to helping make these rate increases less than they are right now, with no growth assumption included. Similarly, on page 11, we know that USDA has given us a $1 million grant. They are not the only source of grant funding. The Maryland Department of the Environment could potentially be an agency that could be approached to get some additional grant funding, and we just, we sketch out for you there what each additional million dollars in grant funding could mean to a reduction in growth. We have not assumed that we're going to get any money from MDE or any other external party. The only entity that's given us a commitment to grant funding is Rural Development, but certainly it's something that the town will be vigorously pursuing. That concludes my presentation. I turn it back over to you, Calvin.
Yep. Thank you, all the consultants, for your presentations. Mayor, it's back to you.
Elected body, there's a discussion period. Does any of the elected body have discussions?
Brian, I'll defer to your version.
I'll go ahead and get started. So sitting up here at the big table, we'll call it, you know, we end up having to make a lot of difficult choices. Yeah, some are, some are easy, some make everybody happy, some aren't so easy. Many of the decisions I know myself, and I've talked to my peers, we end up agonizing over. You know, things could be talked about for days. You know, you talk about with your friends, your families, your coworkers, your different things. You might prey on it, because really, every decision we make, I mean, right now, you know, not counting down the road when the town's bigger, you know, affects, you know, 900 households. It affects, you know, 2,800 different residents. You know, it affects family, and you know, to a smaller extent, people that actually live outside of town, some of the decisions we make affects them also. You know, decisions we make, you know, affects people's property values. You know, affects people's pocketbooks. It affects our wallets, you know, affects the whole community as a whole. The honest truth is, you know, we don't have enough water. You know? I said it, it feels good, doesn't it? You know, it's like, you know, the first steps recognizing you have a problem. We don't have enough water to meet maximum daily demand in the town. You know, there's times, sitting up here, you know, at the big seat, when, you know, I'm a worrier. I always look about risk, and you know, I'm concerned. I'm like, you know, Alan, not that anybody else isn't concerned about risk on the board, but Alan and I have a lot of in-depth conversations about that. You know, I worry about not having enough water. That's, you know, to meet our maximum daily demand. That's not taken into account if there's a drought. You know, if we have a water main break that could leak out 100,000 gallons out of the water tower, you know, that's not a, if one of our largest wells go out, you know, these different things have all happened. You know, we could actually be in a situation now where, you know, people could turn on water and not get it, or get very, very low pressure. And you know, it's, the water is a lot of things. It's, I remember, you know, a lot of communities right now are experiencing what we're going through as far as infrastructure upgrades, pipes need to be replaced, you know, through Baltimore City, Baltimore County, water rates are going up across the board. That's, you know, that's pretty uniform through the entire country, because everybody's struggling with it, because we're talking about water systems that were put in, in the early 1900s, 1950s, maintenance has been deferred, nobody wants to mess with it, nobody wants to touch the pipes. You've got wooden pipes in the grounds in some areas still throughout the country. It could, there's substantial water loss. But the honest truth is, you know, nobody wanted to do anything with any of the infrastructure because it was more expensive to fix the infrastructure than it was what you're losing into the ground. But, you know, these days, for everybody, you know, the chickens are coming home to roost. You know, that's happening right now, you know, with Baltimore's going through, with their water increases. They got to fix their infrastructure. You know, the option is to not do nothing, you know, which we could do, you know, but I'm not sure even if Maryland will let that happen. But if we don't do anything, we could risk being sued by the different developers that want to develop their land. You know, that's happened in the past, when they couldn't develop and the town got sued for, you know, $100 million, you know? All our, that could very well happen, and you know, the minor property tax increase we had, I mean, you know, we could have 300, 400, 500% tax increases to pay for, you know, the debt with a very large lawsuit. You know, so I mean, we really have to do something to fix our infrastructure. And, you know, this is, you know, an investment in the entire town's future. The process started 10 years ago, and I wish to God that somebody did something 10 years ago, you know, to get us farther down the line, but you know, that's, you know, water under the bridge, so to speak. The water, like I said, has been in the planning stages for a decade. That's been said multiple times. This project has actually been approved, which I believe Calvin touched on, two different times, by two different boards, by resolution through the past decade. It just has never gotten this far. You know, the town needs infrastructure to fuel economic development. We needed to fuel growth. You know, we have people sitting right here in this audience that have land they want to sell to build houses. You know, we have people here that, you know, sell properties that, we have developers that want to develop their land to provide us services, restaurants, you know, maybe an auto parts store that stays open past 5:00 p.m., you know, different things, different conveniences for all of us. You know, we've got buildings right across from Town Hall that, you know, look horrible, but without infrastructure, who's going to spend money to fix it? I mean, there's not anybody in this room that would. You know, moving forward, I mean, that, you know, all these different things, you know, setting the money aside, it makes the decision to move forward with this project a pretty easy one. Now, the rate study that Joe Mason did, which did a good job, Joe, thank you, everybody did a good job. You know, if anybody's been in business, the finance guy is the doom and gloom, whether you're working with the CFO, whether you're working with your accountant, whether you're working with your controller, those are all the peoples, I say guy, man or woman, you know, you don't want to talk to, because they're the money people. And it's their job to paint the worst picture. We, you know, in my house, that's my job. You know, when my wife or my kids ask me for things, and I'm sure everybody can apply, it's usually one spouse that's, you know, that's worrying about everything. The picture that Joe painted with the rates, you know, they're high, but you know what? Their worst-case scenario. And like he said, they're assuming zero growth. They're assuming that there's not going to be any infill. There's assuming that no more properties want to annex into town. And you know what? They assume that there's no additional grant money, which I'm not saying there is additional grant money, but it could be significant. We know that we're going to get additional service connections. Right off the bat, there's probably, within the next few months, I mean, we're going to be working on 20 additional service connections outside of the town with the Southern States project and different things. And I mean, you saw his specific numbers with each one of those service connections, you know, if it's water and sewer, that's an additional $16,000 that comes in. If it's just water, that's $8,000. That all goes to help offset the rates, things we can use for projects, to kind of cushion and to make those increases not as high. You know, one of the things that Mr. Klein spoke about is that, you know, we're going to get peak demand up to 1.8 million gallons a day. You know, we use about 170,000. Our sewer plant has roughly 900 connections, so, God bless you. We could do another 1,100 connections, and that's, you know, just by doubling our water usage, just to infill what connections we have, to maximize the sewer plant, that still leaves us hundreds of thousands of gallons of water a day we can utilize, that we can sell throughout the county to the 14 Southern States properties, to, you know, different opportunities where people have wells that are failing or different things, and all these different entities. You know, the more people that we bring onto the system to shoulder this burden, the cheaper it's going to be for all of us. Or we can start cushioning some of these rates. You know, as an, as an board, you know, we've, you know, discussed off and on that, you know, we're, one of the things we need to do is, we need to look to find for a consultant that we can use to help sell the water system, to help sell projects outside of the town, to get water to them, to help kind of offset these rates. So it's like, you know, I saw some of the faces in town, and when you look at the rates, like I said, those are worst-case scenario, and we know that, you know, there's going to be growth. You know, we know we're going to add houses. You know, when we lift the building moratorium, like I said, Commissioner Warnock, myself, and our town administrator sat down in the room a few weeks ago with different developers, real estate agents, so we had 14 people in the room, some were property owners, and you know, people, people are ready to put shovels in the ground. They're ready to make an investment in the town, but the infrastructure has to be there. You know, all these different things are just going to help stabilize the rates, and you know, when you start looking at the big picture, because this is, this is an investment, that, you know, it makes the decision a lot easier. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just, I mean, I'll just add to that. We, this isn't something that, that, I mean, first of all, it's not something that we started. I mean, this goes back many years. it's not something that we started. I mean, this goes back many years. Many boards have looked at this. I mean, I know that there's, in the room, there's commissioners that have, you know, been on the board and have been involved in this process over the years. You know, to say that, like, this was not well thought out, well researched, whatever, I mean, this has been vetted by probably, you know, 20 or more elected body members. This has been vetted by multiple engineering firms. I mean, there's been a lot of eyes on this. And, you know, it's still, even with that, it, you know, it's, it is a daunting task. But, you know, the key is, is we need to look at the economic growth opportunities that come from this. And that's, that's how we're going to, you know, over the long term, that's what'll make this more palatable. As we have economic growth in this town, as we can finally start to move forward on some of these projects, the Southern States line, which is, you know, I don't know all the details of it, but I know enough to know that they're under a consent decree with the state of Maryland to solve the water issues out there. As those, you know, things come online and are solved, that will help with the financial portion of this. As far as the water itself, I think there's been some conversation that the water quality from Chester is actually probably better than the, you know, currently better than, or better than the current water quality of the town. So, we're getting, you know, clean water, better water. There's some, I guess, some, you know, when you're in agricultural area, there's things that seep into the ground over time. And some of those things probably show up in amounts in our wells that are acceptable, you know. But as I think some pointed out, water quality changes over time. And there's, I mean, I don't think it's any silly secret. There's, you know, some level of fecal matter in our water because we're in agricultural area. That's going to happen. You know, it's from animal byproducts and such. So, those issues will be eliminated and the water quality will be better that we get. So, I think that's, you know, some of the things to look out to with this.
Just to add a few things, just to start with what Commissioner O'Leary said, we have first and foremost, looked at this as residents, not commissioners at first. We're residents. We're subject to all this also. The five of us are not immune to this. And when we saw it, we kind of gasped too, because we're subject to Armstrong, we're subject to Delmarva, we're subject to interest rates on our mortgages. So, ladies and gentlemen, first and foremost, remember, we're not immune from this. We're going to be paying it also. But the current board setting here will be in office for a few years to come and will be overseeing this thing. And I can promise you from seeing what Mr. LaShir has done just since he was put on this board and put in charge of this last November, that I have all the confidence that he's going to continue to work on this thing to reduce not only his own out-of-pocket expense for this increase, but for everybody in this town, not just in the audience tonight. When I came to Rising Sun in 2005, purchased my house, we noticed something strange about the water. And I had a guy come out from Rain Soft and test it. And I spent $6,000 on a water treatment system because of high iron, high chlorine, fecal matter, and other nitrates in the water. Because we are an agricultural area out here and we are subject to what seeps through the ground and winds up in our aquifer. And I was, had it told to me in 2005, the cereal bowl analogy, that only so many straws can go into the bowl. And if nobody's there filling the bowl in times of no rain, then where's the water coming from? So, we've known since way back when, and this has been studied, as Dave said, by several engineers, several different consultants, different boards since back in 2005. So, we've come to this point in 2016 where we've seen all the data and the stack this high of all of the studies. This thing is, one of the things that Skip Yo said many years ago, is one thing we're really good at as commissioners in Rising Sun is studying things. And we have studied and studied and studied. And not just ignored the studies, but looked at all the data, all the newspaper articles that have been put out there, all the different comments from outside of the county. We go to Maryland municipal events and we talk to our fellow commissioners and the other municipalities about what they're facing. And not just in Cecil County, Hartford County, throughout the state. I got involved with the town in 2007 as a planning and zoning commissioner. Me and Commissioner Warnock are probably the longest-serving members in municipal here tonight on this current board. And we've seen this over the years of where it came from, where it's gone. And as Joe Mason said and Brian echoed, it's, we're right now at a better spot even with these rate increases than we were in three different studies before. The rates could have gone up a whole lot higher with a higher interest rate. Any of you that are in the banking will know that 1.65 is a pretty doggone good interest rate right now for a loan this big. But you can control your water bill, ladies and gentlemen. You may have to slow down washing your cars, watering your lawns, watering your gardens, and flushing your toilets, putting low-flow faucet heads. You do have some control over this. You can either choose to waste water or conserve water. And I've gone from 7,000 gallons a month to my lowest ever at 3,300 gallons a month. So, you do have a lot of control over it. And water is no longer free, as some people think. Even if you drill a well, you're going to pay permitting, you're going to pay a high cost for a drill, and then you're going to hope that you get good water. So, wells are not the answer to get free water. There's no such thing anymore. Read the paper, look all over. The East Coast has been very lucky that we're not in a drought situation. You look at Lake Mead behind the Hoover Dam and it's on the news weekly of what's going on out there and how bad the water situation is to feed the Imperial Valley. And it could very well be us next. So, we've thought about that. If we don't do nothing and we don't get some water in here, our properties are going to be worthless. I've watched a little town in Southern Virginia where I came from have that exact same thing happen. The town got sued, they went bankrupt, there's nobody picking up trash, there's nobody treating the water, there's nobody running sewer plant. And your property, you couldn't give away at that time. So, one of the things we're doing, as Brian mentioned, Baltimore is adopting something that we have been ahead of, charge per thousand gallons of water. They're having a 9% water and sewer increase going to the Department of Public Works right now. So, look around. We're not the only one in this situation. But the most important thing is, we have some control. And it takes tightening your belt just to think that, don't waste the water. You know, don't run the sink while you're brushing your teeth, shut it off. Don't let the shower run for a long time before you get in. You know, there's so many ways that conservation can control what this will cost you in the long run. So, like I said, Commissioner LaShir, thank you for taking this on. I have all the confidence because I've seen in nine months, he's brought 10 years of work that's gone back and forth. We met with Chester Water in December, and here it is, the end of August, and we have a great deal. And as a resident and as a commissioner, I'm comfortable with putting my name on this and standing behind it, even though this past week, we've been called a lot of vulgar names. We've been called stupid. We've been called everything that we don't deserve because certain people think we work for them. And if we did work for them, we wouldn't put up with this as an employee. We don't deserve it. We are here trying to do the best for everybody, not just the residents, but the commercial community, the building community in here too. Whereas a lot of people in the town of Rising Sun that are affected by what goes on here. There's the future and there's the present. And a lot of what happened in the past is affecting it. But I think here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have a great deal. We've had some great experts here working on this project for, with us. And we haven't taken only their advice. Like I said, we've, this thing has been studied. We've looked at all the different scenarios. So, you can't say that we just willy-nilly took something on just because somebody promoted it. It's really been looked at thoroughly. So, we want to thank Jay Gallow, Mike Klein, Ryan Flickinger, and Joe Mason for all the work they've put into it, as well as my fellow commissioners and Mr. Mayor and the town administrator who's put in years of hard work on this thing through several different board members, mayors and commissioners, and has, you know, brought it back to us each time and said, you know, he gets called a lot of bad things and we're not puppets by no means, as so many people have said. He has prevented, presented the facts to each board and let us make our decisions. Calvin, thank you for putting up with all the years of hard work on this thing and for bringing it to the point that we're at tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. I'll end this discussion with, you know, I look at this and 2005, I was graduating from high school. And in 2005, they could have started this project. You look back at boards previous and for political reasons, for other reasons, they decided not to do it. This board shoulders that burden of the past, of the studies, of the constant, let's push it down the line, let's wait. And we cannot wait any longer. What I want to see from Rising Sun is development. I want to see new businesses come. I want to see new residents come. And we're going to do everything we can to try to bring new businesses to town, to try to bring new residents to town. Like most of the commissioners have said, Commissioner LaShir, I believe, put it best, we are also shouldering this burden as a board. We live in this community. We pay the same rates as everyone else does. And we know how hard this is going to be. But I look forward to the positive of this being that we will see new businesses come, that we will see new residents come into our community, and we'll start to see Rising Sun have a rebirth. And with that said, is there any more discussion?
I'd like to say something. If I can get this microphone close enough. I just want to kind of go with this a little bit. I'm, I've lived around here my entire life. I grew up on Hope Road. So, I'm not just an outsider coming in, you know, willy-nilly on this. I've seen this my entire life. I've seen everything the town's gone through. This subject has been top priority since I came in office. Okay? It's a big issue. We all know it. This stuff is what keeps us up at night. I'm, I think about this constantly. I study all the notes that I have. I go through all this. This is not a light decision. So, I don't want anybody to think that. We've gone through tons and tons and tons of reports and research and engineering studies. This is not a light decision. This is a very serious thing that affects a lot of people. And we've done our due diligence. We have talked to this, talked about this till, you know, we're blue in the face. It is a very serious thing and we take it very serious. I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move into citizens' comment portion. First on the comment portion is Mr. Kather.
Mr. Mayor, before we move into citizens' comment, I'd like to read something into record.
All right.
I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to a letter we received from Robert Fisher on August 22, 2016, in regards to our current water project. This letter has been reviewed by the entire board and plus all of our consultants. I want to go ahead and read this into the official public record. "To Mayor and Commissioners Town of Rising Sun, C.C. Calvin Bonnberger, Town Administrator, from Robert A. Fisher, Date: August 22, 2016, Subject: Assessment of Water Supply Options. I respectfully request that you do a realistic assessment of the two available options for increasing the town water supply. There is no immediate need for an increase to the water supply, as the present water supply will support an additional 550 equivalent dwelling units. The present proposed solution will require approximately $16 million to add 240,000 gallons to the water supply if needed, which would support 1,313 additional equivalent dwelling units. The payoff is, we will be paying $2.05 per 1,000 gallons of water than the cost under the other plan. I believe that there is a high probability that we will never need the extra, as we can build 550 units with the existing wells. When the contract is signed for the construction of the pipeline from Chester Water Authority, we will be obligated to pay $15,600,848 for the pipeline, plus the cost of the bridge loan to finance the funding during construction, whether all of the 240,000 gallons per day is used. The alternative is to drill four new wells and to activate the existing well on the American Legion property for a total cost of $1,430,000, which can be done one at a time on an as-needed basis. Thus, there is no risk of investing $16 million regardless of how much water is ultimately needed. There would be a savings of the $2.05 per 1,000 gallons as well, and this may not require any debt, as the income from the additional wells would provide funding needed for their additional. I look forward to your data that this proves my thesis. Robert Fisher." To date, the whole water situation, all our different options, whether it's drilling a different additional wells, bringing water for Chester Water, bringing water from other towns, selling the water system, that's actually been studied by three different engineering firms, KCI, GHD, and CDM. And all of them have independently concluded that additional wells is not a viable option. I do have a couple of questions that Mr. Fisher brought up that I do want our town engineer to answer. Robert, the first question is, Robert Fisher said that drilling four new wells and activating the American Legion well is $1,430,000. Ryan, do you agree with that number and that that could be done?
Four new wells for 1.4 million is not in line with prices that I've seen. The two consulting firms that have already priced this option for the town, as Brian mentioned, CDM and GHD, their prices came in over $2 million per well and wellhouse each, which for four new wells, it would project to closer than, closer to $10 million.
Okay. The second point is, Robert Fisher said that we currently have enough water to support an additional 550 dwelling units. Ryan, in your estimation, what do you think about that statement?
I'm not, I can't say where the 550 units came from, but I can tell you that when you're looking at capacity, the more limiting factor from an allocation standpoint is your peak daily flow, not simply your average withdrawal amounts. And based on the studies that have been done to date, which have already been mentioned, and also just in conversations with the, with the town and the operators, it's my understanding there are, there's no additional capacity from a peak daily standpoint.
Thank you. The third question is, the entire project being proposed by the town will cost $16 million to add 240,000 gallons per day of water supply. Do you agree with the $16 million cost and that low of a yield, 240,000 gallons per day?
The intent for the Chester Water connection, as stated in the preliminary engineering report, would be in excess of an additional 1.6 million gallons a day of flow. And there, keep in mind, there are two different alignment options. The one that would take the waterline directly to your water tower was approximately $10 million and some change, whereas the option to tie in in the northern part of town would reduce the anticipated construction cost to $9 million.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All right. We're going to move into a public comments session. And the public comment is going to be for, only for this water issue tonight, since this is a special meeting. Yes, sir?
Mr. Fisher, I want you to sit down.
Okay, absolutely. As soon as these two gentlemen speak, you can definitely come up and speak, sir. Mr. Kather, you were first. Three minutes, sir. We're going to be ready.
My name's William Cother.
Mr. Cother, sorry.
Cother. Just like father, only cother. Thank you all. First of all, it was a very informative presentation. Thank you. I only have three minutes. What's the projected PSI of water coming into town, sir?
75 to 85 PF5.
75 to 85 on an antiquated waterline system that they have to shut the water tower down every time they get water. every time they get water in it. Okay, if you don't go with the option that takes it to the tower, there could be problems. Secondly, Chester Water will be providing water service to the Nottingham area. Correct? Someone?
I'm not certain what Chester's going to do. What's up with Chester?
Okay, well, is the intent to pump water to the Rising Sun Tower, and the tower being in essence surplus water to flow back?
We said at the last meeting, sir, no water flows back. There's a check.
I heard that.
There will be no water flowing back.
No water flowing back, okay. If it's not pumped, what's going to stop an overflow situation? I, I'm assuming Rising Sun has an altitude valve and Bonner's got a working altitude valve. That will be addressed during construction, I guess?
I can, I can do this one. So the, what an altitude valve does is, an altitude valve makes sure that the, the pressure where the water's coming from, whether it's coming from a well, whether it's coming around town, doesn't overflow your tank. It shuts, shuts the tank off. So the, the hydraulics, the intent of the hydraulics, you know, would be to match your existing conditions to, to the, to the extent possible. So the altitude valve would prevent the water tower from, from overflowing if, if the cap, the town's current valve is, is, is functioning. If the, if, if there is no altitude valve, then what, what the, what's typical in this scenario is there'll be a, a pressure-reducing valve that can be used at the state line as needed to dampen the pressure, to, to, to avoid excess pressures coming, coming into town.
This will be one contract for construction?
The construction on the Pennsylvania side and the construction on the Maryland side will be bid by, the Maryland side will be bid by the Town of Rising Sun. The Pennsylvania side will be bid by Chester Water Authority.
Could the same contractor?
It will be open to any competitive bidder, any responsible competitive bidder.
Hence, Chester Water's going to maintain the water line in its entirety to the tower in Rising Sun, or?
No, 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 sir. The Chester Water Authority will maintain the line in Pennsylvania up to the state line. From that point, the line will be owned in Maryland by the Town of Rising Sun. The line in Pennsylvania will be owned by Chester.
And it'll be the town's responsibility to maintain it in Maryland?
It's owned, it's owned by, yes, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Cother, it's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Well, I really want to thank you, Brian, for reading my letter. I, well, didn't want to take the time up to, to read it myself, so I, I really thank you. I really appreciate, I hate to disagree with a fellow alumnus in the University of Delaware, but I, I, well, that changes my presentation. The plan that I have presented to the town on, the audit plan that I have presented to the town on three different occasions was originally given to the commissioners in January 2014, or soon thereafter, and it presented twice to commissioners since that time. So, but I haven't seen a cost, a realistic cost estimate on a side-by-side basis with, with my plan and the availability of additional recharge areas for additional supply of the 240,000 gallons of water per day, which is all that, what we're meant without expansion of our present sewer system, which would require, cost another 20-point-some million dollars in total final cost, finance cost. I've seen ballpark estimates that would start at $1 million or $2 million for four additional wells and opinions rather than the facts about the availability of the recharge area and, and well sites. In my opinion, if the mayor and commissioners approve ordinance 2016-11, they are making a long odds bet that the water demand will increase by seven, 840,000 gallons per day. If that does, it will cost about, I said, $23.4 million loan cost to double the capacity of the sewer system, because the sewer system becomes a limiting factor on how much additional water we can pump. But, and I kind of disagree with Mr. Flickinger's statement that the well water is not available and is uncertain quality. The well water in this part of the town is in excellent quality. There is a well on the Van Dyke property, Wellington Manor property, that produced on drilling 260,000 gallons a minute, and the well, it's an 8-inch well.
Mr. Fisher?
Produced, and is the major.
That was three minutes, sir.
What?
That was three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, well, there's much more to be said, but I appreciate, I wish I'd have had the information I have now when I prepared this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Moore. I just wanted to ask, I'm sure you have a projected completion date for the water line to get connected?
Um, yeah, I can go ahead and answer that. We have to have all the permits in place and, by July, that timeframe, and the project is a six-month project on the Pennsylvania side and three months on the Maryland side, but both sides will be running parallel.
We're talking.
Hopefully the end of next year.
It should be completed within a year, anyway.
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two questions. Number one, who are we dealing with? Who owns Chester Water Works? A municipality?
Chester Water Authority is a governmental authority that is, it was created by the city of Chester, and it's now a regional authority in Pennsylvania. And it's governed by the Pennsylvania Municipality Authorities Act. It has directors who are appointed by the governmental members, who are members of that, of that authority, and they serve terms.
Second question, if we send the water to our water tower, is our tower having enough capacity for it?
Yeah, I'll let, Ryan, if you want to handle that? Currently, yes, because the situation is, the storage that you're going to need is going to need to be to match your existing conditions. But if I may, I think where you might be going with that is, as, as growth continues, there will be a trigger point where, in order to be able to store, when you, when you design water storage in a town, you're designed for your, your town's daily consumption plus your most demanding fire flow. So as, as a town grows, the, the storage volume required grows over years. So storage requirements will be more a function of growth, not so much where the water's coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Sir?
Could you come over to the microphone, please?
Sorry.
I'll give the town on the citizen of Rising Sun.
Can we get your name and address, please?
Harry Ring, 120 East Main Street.
Thank you.
You're probably going to have to build a tower pretty soon, so the cost numbers are going to go up. Number two is, Chester Water pump surface water or well water?
Chester Water has a 60 million gallon a day allocation where they can draw water from the Octoraro or the Susquehanna River. So it's surface water.
Surface water and well water, excuse me, is a whole new can of worms when it comes to water quality? And for you in the blue shirt, where did you move to in Rising Sun that your water was so nasty?
Maple Heights Development, and it was tested by Delaware Water Products Rainsoft. And, and some of my neighbors have been there 10 years, have already had to replace water heaters.
Is that your well, or was that on the town's?
It's on the town's municipal system.
And you had vehicle call for a minute?
Yes. Higher than what I care to drink, without filtration. So I invested in myself in a system.
Something's wrong, anyway. Good luck. That guy there did a good, pretty good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Board of Town Commissioners, I'm Dan Schneckenberg, I serve in County Council, District Three, which includes Rising Sun. Certainly, I wanted to be here tonight. I was asked to come by a few commissioners, and certainly, this is a big step for the town and, and, and in a lot of respects, a historic step for the town, to really go through 11 years of a moratorium and still be in a position where you're still functioning and looking at ways to grow it forward is, is kind of amazing, really, to be in this position. And, and honestly, you know, when, when you look at the water and sewer rates, Mr. Mason, who has done excellent work on behalf of the county and helping us save several hundreds of thousands of dollars for taxpayers and bond refinancing, this is the right way to do it. You have to look at your water and sewer rates and say, we have to assume zero growth. So those numbers are bad. I mean, if I'd lived in town, I'd be like, why, how are we going to be able to do this? And one of the things that you have to understand is, the only way rates are going to go down is if you add new users. And you can add new users when you have a moratorium or you don't have a dedicated water supply. So that has to get done. And the other thing I would, I would ask, if I were a resident here, I'd be saying, okay, if you know your construction schedule and you know your engineering schedule, the primary task of this board should be to be developing their economic development strategy to bring on new users immediately when that pipeline is commissioned and the USDA sanctions to, to move forward with that. So those rates, as they look now, potentially are high on paper, and you may potentially not, not even pay anywhere close to that if the town and everybody else does the right thing. I will tell you, there is significant interest in this town of Rising Sun. You have a lot of opportunity here. I've said that for the last couple of years. You're finally taking really a bold step in moving forward and clearing off that, the last obstacles and be able to, to grow your town and bring in new taxpayers and new revenues, and, and I encourage you to move forward with this. Also, I wanted to let you know, I went down to Ocean City this past week for the Maryland Association of Counties Conference, and I had several conversations with both the governor's office and, and two or three cabinet secretaries, and, and I am encouraged that we'll be able to also find additional grant funding to help defray this construction cost. So I'm willing to work with the town and Mayor Marion to, in the next several months to solidify that commitment. I heard, I even heard it from Governor Hogan himself. So we're going to move forward with this, and, and I congratulate you on making a tough, tough decision, but the right decision for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Yeah, hi, my name's John Bowler. I'm the deputy chief of the Rising Sun Fire Department. I just got a couple of questions. When you bring the line down red pump, are you considering hydrants down until, from the line to town limits? Has that been considered, or is that something you would consider?
I, I know there has been talk about adding the hydrants, because I know the fire department has interest in adding them. I mean, I don't know exactly where that's at. Calvin, if you have any insight, Calvin? I know we discussed it briefly.
I think it makes sense to add hydrants. So as, as what I met with you previously, yeah, I think it's, it would behoove us to have hydrants.
Okay, I mean, from my aspect, you know, you're already putting the line, hydrants, you know, I'm not sure of the cost, but if it's something you guys would consider to get a price on, at least, to consider, you know, that stretch coming down into town, because the hydrants down there on the far end of town even, you know, that would be a great plus, you know, out along Route One. So if nothing else, get cost, and if we have to try to get funding somewhere else, I think it's, uh, everybody's best interest.
Oh, definitely. And I think the, the cost of the actual hydrants, we talked of before, were probably about like 15,000 apiece to have them put in. So I mean, the, the cost is not insignificant. It's, when you look at, you think, you know, the one thing I've learned about municipal government since October is usually everything's a million dollars. You know, it's, you know, how much is it to put in a pipeline? What's a million dollars a mile? How much, you know, we've talked about getting water and sewer, you know, out through Main Street, and it's like, well, you know, you need a pumping station for a sewer, and it's like, well, how much is a pumping station? A million dollars, you know? Everything's nice round numbers. But yeah, it's something we definitely look at, and it's a great idea for public safety.
Okay, and one last thing, I think your decision for going with that line is a great asset to the town of Rising Sun from the fire department's standpoint.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Hearing none, we'll move forward into business items. Commissioner LaShir?
The first, sharing microphone. The first item is a resolution, 2016-11, the Chester Water Agreement. And, Mr. Gallow, did you want to review this?
Yes, Commissioner Mayor. What you have in front of you is a resolution to basically adopt a contract. The resolution has a preamble that outlines the current conditions, the reasons why, and the basis for adopting the contract. And the contract is the contract that Mr. Klein talked about, which is the Chester Water Line Bulk Supply Water Agreement and Connection Agreement. I'll save you with reading that. You can see a copy of that online if you need to. But basically, the effect of, of voting on this is that it will adopt the Bulk Water Supply and Connection Agreement with Chester Water.
Thank you, Mr. Gallow.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2016-11?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I believe Commissioner Althan Ray's got that one. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Resolution 2016-012, which is the use of rebate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gallow, do you want to review this one also, please?
Yes, this one, as you heard about in the presentations, both Mr. Klein and Mr. Mason, there is a rebate and a reef reimbursement that is going to come from Chester Water to the town once the water line is complete. The rebate and reimbursement deal with the cost of the pipe being paid back to the town, and then also the cost of the hookups and the years of connection. So those information that was provided in the, the presentations needed to be formalized. And one of the things that, the fiscal responsibility that the board wanted, and also that your eventual lender USDA wanted, wanted to know that when you receive those funds at the town, that they're going to be held and used for this project, and used to pay for the water lines. Because this is happening several years out, they wanted guarantees for that. And so the guarantee that you're offering is you're passing a resolution of your intent that when you receive those lines, those monies, the rebates and the reimbursements, that they're going to be segregated aside, and they're going to be used to pay for the water line and pay for the ongoing cost of the debt service of the water line, as Mr. Mason outlined in his plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve Resolution 2016-012, which is the use of rebate?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Introduction of Ordinance 2016-06, which is the banned resolution. Town Attorney, do you have that?
I do have that in front of me, and I will spare everyone, including myself, the, the pain of reading this 14-page document. I will explain. I will explain what the band resolution and the bond resolution do. They work in concert with each other, and I'll explain in technical sense, and then I'll give you an analogy, so everybody's very clear. When the town goes out to borrow money, it can't issue a mortgage like you can at your house. It has to issue what's called a bond, and a bond is the town's promise to pay the money that borrows back, and it has certain parameters and terms. And so a bond is a long-term financing agreement. The lender that is going to take our bond is the Department of Agriculture, USDA, you've heard that. So that's how you're going to long-term finance your water project, is with this bond. However, a bond is only going to be issued by USDA once the project is complete. You need the money before the project is complete, you need the money to build the project. And so in an interim term, in an interim financing situation, the town has to issue what's called a band, which is a bond anticipation note, meaning I know I'm going to do a bond, but in the middle pre-time, it's a band that is issued. And so to give you the analogy, so everybody's very clear on this, if you were going to build your own house, you would eventually go to the bank and say, I want to build a house on this lot that I own, and the bank would say, I'll give you construction money, I'll give you a construction loan. In our parlance, that's a band, that's the construction loan. And when you go to the bank and say, my house is finished, there's the, the, the house, it's finished, it's inspected, the bank would say, all right, the construction loan is going to be paid off, and we're going to give you a traditional mortgage. And in our parlance, that's a bond. So you have a band to a bond, and that's what those two things do. If you read through these, and everybody wants to read through them, the important part that you realize is that you'll see the sum of twelve million dollars, which exceeds everything you've heard about tonight, and that's okay. That is not the project cost, that is not the borrowing cost, that's the limitation amount. You're limiting yourself that you will not borrow for this project more than twelve million dollars. Obviously, we've had estimates that come in at ten million nine, and some come in with rebates less than that, but we want to make sure that the authorization that the bank sees is that you would be able to fund up to twelve million dollars if you needed to. So that's why you'll see twelve million dollars in both of those. The procedure for this, as their ordinances, you will introduce them tonight, and then you will vote on them at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, Town Attorney. Introduction of Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, which is the sewer and water rates. Commissioner LaCher, do you have that?
Do they have to make a motion to formally introduce that? We've always done that before. I think you should, yes. Now, as we've always done before, you should entertain a motion to formally introduce what he just said.
Okay, can I get a formal motion to introduce Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero six, which is a band resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, gentlemen. Could I get an introduction of ordinance, can I get a motion to approve an introduction of Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero seven, which is the bond resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, introduction of Resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero seven dash thirteen, excuse me, sewer and water rates, Commissioner LaCher.
Thank you, Mayor Marion. Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirteen is the, the rate, the rate study or the rate schedule for the water and sewer table that Mr. Mason discussed earlier, it goes from rate increases from two thousand seventeen all the way up to two thousand five. This, no, excuse me, two thousand twenty-five, this also will be posted on the website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, which is the sewer and water rates?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Is there any more business come forward the board this evening?
Mayor, we wanted to clarify, did you adopt that, or did you introduce it?
The Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, I adopted it. A motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay. Adjournment, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.